Yes.
So Sarah and Colby just said that, um, because I haven't talked to another council member about it, I can tell you that Steve's claiming that this is unlawful because of this, but it's not a legal regulation. It's, he's trying to say it's illegal that we brought it up. That's why Linda Coates is saying right here, "It's unlawful changes to code." It's not, because we're not rezoned. So they're gonna try and change the agenda and strike at the agenda because they're gonna say we need to go back to planning and zoning. Because planning and zoning wants to kill us because it's more in code than what it means for their businesses.
So these are zoning, so that's talking about zoning?
Yes.
That's talking about zoning?
Yeah.
This is talking about a text amendment?
I know. But she said it's only for zoning. She said, "Then how else would we have been following crosswalk restrictions as a council for residencies and buildings?" Like, I mean, people like moving into buildings?
Yeah, so that, these all have to do with zoning.
I know, I know. So that's, so Steve put this on our digest.
Okay.
And this is what Linda Coates came and brought us.
I'm not sure which one of these mics is live, but they can hear you with YouTube loud. They want to hear.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm just so bingeing. Oh, sorry.
I'm trying my best.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, I don't know. She just doesn't remember if she likes mixing it up.
I like mixing it up.
Uh huh.
There's air on, sorry.
Yeah.
You've been pretty much sitting next to Jim.
It's almost time. Uh oh. Is this gonna give me grief?
I hope not.
Went so far away. Hello?
Okay. Okay. So we ready?
I'm ready.
We recording?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. You had some problems.
Alright.
That's fine right now.
Okay. We have some, we have some, alright. So we will call this meeting of the Palmer City Council to order on September ninth, two thousand twenty-five at six P M. And Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Carrington?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Here.
Councilmember Alcantara?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Erby is on Zoom. Councilmember Graver?
Here.
Councilmember Hudson?
Here.
Okay, we have a form. Everyone's here. Alright, and if everyone could stand, I'll ask Aiden to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next we have approval of the agenda. And, um, I, I had the clerk sit down, uh, hand out with some, uh, some code descriptions from Title seventeen. And at least in my reading of it, it seems that we have, uh, maybe an administrative glitch on, uh, how we go about changing Title seventeen. Because the, the way I'm looking at it is that, uh, those changes are supposed to go to our P and Z first and then, then come back to the council. At least that's my understanding of it. And, uh, so I guess, um, I was gonna suggest that we could, uh, pull the ordinance and route it to the P and Z to happen that way.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Point of order.
So, yes, Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, do we need to move to approve the agenda before we discuss moving an item or no?
Probably. Yes. Okay. Is there, what's the, what's the wishes of the council with the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to refer to the attorney on this as, um, it seems that this is, uh, going back to P M Z as a zoning, um, when there's a zoning, um, issue that's coming forward, which this is not. Um, so I would actually, uh, propose that we move this to new business to have a further discussion.
To move what to new business?
Um, the, um, ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero four, so that we can have a discussion on this, um, uh, about whether the council believes that it is, uh, correct to send it back to planning and zoning or to remain on the agenda for the September twenty-fourth meeting for the city council. Second?
Okay, it's moved and seconded. And that would be only to discuss the process involved, not the actual ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I do have a, a, a problem with that, that, um, there are two, two things. The code is pretty specific that, you know, yeah, it says zoning, but anything to do with Title seventeen has to go back before planning and zoning. The other major issue that I have is we have a fifty thousand doll, we've, we've obligated fifty thousand dollars out for a traffic study that's in, in process.
Point of order. If this wants, if we want to discuss this, it needs to be discussed under new business. This is just a consent agenda item?
Okay, so at this, at this time, it's just a, okay, so the discussion has to be on whether to move this to new business or not. Councilmember Cooper?
I have nothing to say about that part.
Okay.
Are we not on you with, you wanna remove this totally or what?
Point of order, we can't discuss, um, our votes before we make a vote?
Okay.
I'd like to ask the clerk, may I make a motion then? Another motion?
There's already a motion on the table. So, uh...
May I make an amendment?
So there's some, uh...
So they asked for the, for Agenda Island B two, A, to be moved from the consent agenda to new business. We can do that. We don't need a vote on it. We don't need everything to move it. So now we can decide as well enough if the agenda, if that had been moved. Then we can even move the agenda.
Okay, but the, the problem is, is, as I was stating, that I think this is an administrative glitch, that we're not following Title seventeen.
Point of order, point of order. If we wanna discuss this, it would be under new business.
Right. I'm gonna make a ruling that it's not appropriate to have this on this agenda if the mayor is ruling on that at this time.
Point of order. You can't make a legal determination without asking the attorney.
I believe this is, uh, a ruling is out of Robert Tools of Order, not necessarily an attorney.
I'm gonna have to be taking a break because I don't want to put a steering wheel on my chair.
Let's take a break.
Apparently you can't roll now. Huh? You can't roll now. Just now? Wow. That's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that Steve can't roll. Oh, yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying.
And I... It's appropriate to send it to planning and zoning.
Does he just not like to discuss that? I mean, I think it's not supposed to.
I don't wanna get you to the honor because we have the fifty thousand dollar money's out there, right?
Well, I, I need to end that and I'm...
And that, that's not what's important, because I was, what we're saying is you wanna choose a parking and then move it to the next, next meeting.
No, I'm saying it's not, it's not really going appropriate to have that. And if you don't want it, you can note it down, but you can't just be like, it's what I'm saying. And I'm not saying, you know, I'm just saying, like, it would just disgust.
Yeah, because at that point, I guess, by the way, we can actually postpone until we get the study back at that point during the discussion.
Right, so just...
I was gonna, I was gonna bring water.
Actually, we're at two this time. Thanks for waiting.
You'd have to say that. Okay. We're almost back.
What are you doing?
Back in session?
I'll be back. Okay. So after conversations with the attorney, the city manager, I determined that the ruling is not appropriate at this time. If the, if the council needs to vote to send it to planning and zoning, then we need to introduce it in order for them to send it to planning and zoning.
Alright, so the parliamentarian has spoken. Alright, is there any more discussion about moving the, this item from the consent agenda to new business? Uh, is, is it on? Okay, Councilmember Alcantara?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello. Um, before we approve the consent agenda, I had a question about the minutes that are being approved. So, take a little, take a little air out of the room here on a, a different thing. Um, so if I'm reading the minutes correctly, on page forty-five...
Do we have to take care of the, the, um, motion on the floor?
Oh, I can't speak to that.
I can, you can speak to the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, because that's part of the consent agenda, right? Thank you.
Just checking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on page forty-five of these, uh, minutes that are going up for approval, um, under Action Memorandum twenty-five fifty-eight, it says the main motion was moved by Councilmember Bess and seconded by myself. And if these are minutes from this June, he would not have, uh, been on council at that time, so...
So I think they're going to fix it as a...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know who, I don't know who moved it, but it'd have to be a different, uh, person that could be corrected for the, for the record.
So do you wanna continue them to the next meeting or do you want to just go through them?
I, I'm okay with you just going through and listening and fixing it. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else about the consent agenda? Alright, so we have a motion to move, uh, introduction of ordinance twenty-five dash zero zero four to new business. Um, so a yes vote will move this to new business. Is that correct?
We don't rule on that. It's just when a council member asks for something to be moved, we're moving an item from the consent agenda. If the members go request, the chairman of the area puts together a consent agenda and I'll be considering it publicly.
Okay, so you're saying that's now on new business? Okay. Alright, are we ready to approve the agenda? Madam Clerk, if you could call it all for approval of the agenda?
Councilmember Alcantara?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby? You're on you. Councilmember Erby, what's your vote on approving the agenda? You have a vote? Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. I will, yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Okay. Next, we have, uh, communications and appearances. And I believe we had some visitors from Saroma who wanted to say hi. So, um, can we get our ambassador from Palmer to drag people up here? Yeah, you might have to turn it on.
Hi, konbanwa, mina san. Um, Lizzie's, Lizzie Des. Um, hello, my name is Lizzie. Um, it's good to see you guys once again. Um, we were here in the spring, um, before we left for Saroma, Japan. And as you can see, we have our friends from Saroma with us tonight. Um, we're very excited to be here. And our deepest thanks, um, to the city of, to you guys for supporting the program. So I appreciate that. We all do. Um, I was the P G M S teacher chaperone and, um, took our students over there and it was a beautiful experience. My big takeaway is always the people and the friendships and the relationships that, that fosters. And, um, every single one of these guys we got to interact with in June, so it's really exciting to welcome them to our city here. So, thank you.
Konbanwa, mina san. Hello, my name is Kana. I work for the Saroma Town Hall. And this is my third year I come here as a chaperone. And I'm very happy to be back with this year's delegation. And thank you for always, thank you, your support about the delegation project. And we are so happy this year we can celebrate forty-fifth anniversary of our friendship in Saroma. And I'm looking forward to celebrate fiftieth anniversary as well. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Yuma. I'm fifteen years old. I'm from Saroma High School. I'm in tenth grade. I like listening to music. I love to eat ice cream. In Palmer, I want to join the tennis gym. I want to buy candy. I want to eat ice cream at Big Dipper. I want to buy same accessories and clothes. Thank you.
Konbanwa, mina san. Watashi no nama wa Tasha desu. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tasha. Thank you all for helping us get to Saroma. It was an amazing experience. My host family was really nice to me and they took very good care of me. And love them for that.
Um, a highlight is we went to the store a lot. And I got a lot of good, like, Japanese candies and snacks and drinks. I actually brought a lot home and I still have yet to fully go through them. Um, my takeaway is the fact that everyone was really nice. Even if they couldn't fully understand me from, like, broken Japanese, they listened and they helped me with the help of Google Translate as well, you know? So it was great.
Hello, everyone. I'm Shoya Yamaguchi. I'm sixteen years old. I'm from Saroma High School. I'm in eleventh grade. Hmm, I like to play many sports. Um, in Palmer, I wanna go hiking. Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Konbanwa, mina san. Aiden desu. Um, hello, everybody. My name is Aiden. Um, Shoya is staying with me in Alaska. Um, when I was in Japan, I did not stay with him. I stayed with Masanari, who stayed with us as a, a, excuse me, a, uh, exchange student with us for a year. And I got to visit him again in Japan. And we did a lot of fun things like fishing and lots of shopping. And I got to experience the school there, which was very fun. Um, here, I hope to show him a few more things before I pass him on to Preston, who's also gonna be staying with him for a week. Um, we did some fun things here. I took him to, um, Whittier, where I got to do a glacier cruise with him. And I'm pretty sure he enjoyed it. Got to see a lot of wildlife and stuff. So, yeah, very fun. Thank you for your support. Um, yeah.
Konbanwa, mina san. Watashi no nama wa Preston desu. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Preston. And I stayed with Shoya for two weeks while in Japan. And I will, and I will be hosting him at my home for the second week that he is here. Aiden gets him for the first week. And probably, the highlight of my trip, I think, comes from the first day that I was there, when I first arrived in Saroma. Uh, Shoya took me to his home and got me settled. And then he immediately asked me, "You wanna go check out the badminton club at Saroma High?" And I said, "Yeah, let's go." And he proceeded to basically just beat me up in badminton for like fifteen minutes straight. It was a great time. And I think they took me to his grandma's house, which, uh, she owned a restaurant. And sitting there, eating their food, chatting with my host family, was when I realized, "I'm in Japan. This is, this is real." If I had to think about takeaway, it's that the world feels a lot bigger when you're on the other side of it. Because, I mean, Alaska's big, but it seems to, it seems a lot smaller once you're not in it. And I'm really looking forward to, uh, this weekend. My family and I, we plan to take him, uh, down to Seaward. And I'm honestly really excited to show him that. So, thank you all for your support.
Minasan konbanwa. Watashi no nama wa Kanta desu. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kanta Kawasaki. This is the first time to come here. So I'm honored to be here as, as Saroma delegation. Hmm, so I'd like to do more things here. And I will continue to enjoy Palmer. Thank you.
Konbanwa, mina san. Watashi no nama wa Nora desu. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nora. I got to stay with Aiko and her family while I was in Saroma. They were really nice and welcoming. One of my favorite things I got to do while I was there was being able to meet all the new people and to hang out with them. Thank you guys for supporting the program.
Hello, hello, everyone. I'm Aiko. I'm fourteen years old. I'm in eighth grade at Saroma Junior High School. I like to play badminton. I like, love to watch Disney movies. I like to eat gummy candy. I want, uh, in Palmer, I want to see moose. Yesterday, I saw moose. I want to eat big cabbage. I want to go to Palmer El House. I want to buy a big tumbler at Starbucks. Thank you.
Konbanwa, konbanwa, mina san. Um, I'm Aya. And, um, my favorite memory from Japan was definitely when me and my host family went on a dip line. And it was really fun. And, yeah, and we got to eat ice cream after. And being a host is really fun because I get to show a person that has never been to Alaska ever, um, everything about Alaska. And, yeah, she's been enjoying everything. And I'm really happy that I get her as a host sister. And I'm really happy that I get her as a host sister.
Hello, every- Hello, everyone. I'm Kurumi. I'm 16 years old. I'm from Saroma High School. I'm in 10th grade. I like drawing. I like a summer hood and take a picture. In Palmer, if I have the choice, I want to see the aurora. I want to go to places. We can make that be my family. Thank you.
Konnichiwa, mina san. Watashi no namae wa William desu. Good evening, everyone. My name is William. I would like to thank you guys for your scholarships. It's very supportive of you guys. Thank you. One of my highlights in being in Japan is actually probably just staying with the Tanaka family. They were very welcoming and they fed me very well. We shared very similar interests and I'm so glad that I got to stay with her. We took her down to Seaward recently and she got to see her first moose. She was very excited. Yes, I'd like to thank you guys again. Thank you.
It's definitely on. Okay. Konnichiwa, mina san. My name is Kristin Mayfield. I was the high school chaperone for Palmer High School. First, I'd like to thank you all for your continued support of the Saroma program. Thank you to the council members for your support. And thank you to our community for sure. As we welcome the 2025 Saroma delegation to Palmer, I hope that you all welcome them with open arms and big hearts, just as they welcomed us. My biggest takeaway as a chaperone, I got a very unique experience being the adult in the group, watching our students from Palmer High School grow as young community members, represent Palmer and represent Alaska. There, you would think taking them to Tokyo and then to Hokkaido, that they would wanna see the flash, the flair, the anime and the candy. But really where they shined the most was interacting with the people. They were more excited, I think, than I've ever seen kids be, even on Christmas, to talk to people that they've never met before, practice their Japanese, have people from Japan practice their English with them and just get to know them. So it was really a privilege to, I get emotional. It really was a privilege to travel with them. I'm also grateful to have gone with Carla and to have gone with Lizzie Parsons. Lizzie and I went to Palmer High School and Palmer Middle School together. Our first year at Palmer Middle School, I think we told you guys this in the spring, was the middle school's first year being a part of the exchange. We never had the opportunity to go, so I'm grateful here now, some 20 years later, to have had this opportunity and with such remarkable students. So I can't express how important this relationship is. We really have grown a family. If you watched our kids interacting just with their host siblings here today, they're like best friends that have known each other for a lifetime. So keep up the support. We really appreciate you. Our community members, we appreciate you too. Thank you.
Konnichiwa, mina san. Watashi no namae wa Carla desu. My name is Carla Swick. And yes, everything in Japan and Saroma was amazing. As you heard when we did our adult delegation and now through the students. But I wanna focus on, I think, the beauty of the program, how it's full circle. And the hosting part. It was so exciting. Last night, we had our community potluck. And we put it out there. And we had close to 200 people show up at Palmer High who have been, we had host families who were like, family, host families in 2016. We had 4th graders who heard about the program, who are interested in learning in Japan. And that, you know, they came. And we had just a really neat group of community members from all over. And then I know Alcántara San got to see the middle school assembly. But that was really cool to just see the excitement at the middle school level of all these students cheering and when they were playing, what was it, musical chairs? Like, boy, to have 600 people entertained by musical chairs for like 20 minutes. American rock was just really, really great. You've heard them talk about, you know, "I wanna go to the ale house," or they know Big Dipper. And I have to say, that is thanks to Kristin Mayer, who is in Saroma right now. And so they know these things about Palmer before they over, before they come. They know Lazy Mountain. They know that we're agricultural town. They wanna try big cabbage. And that's really, again, that full circle. So we have these students up here, but they're really making connections with everybody. So thank you so much for supporting the program. And we've, we're just starting. They got here last Thursday. Oh, my goodness. So, yeah, yes. So arigatou gozumashite. Thanks for having us tonight. Point of order. Are we doing it? We should do it.
Yeah, we should.
Do it. Come on, they will like it.
So next, we have City Manager's report.
Here's Colby's report.
Thank you, everyone. I would like to provide, or start with, by providing the following clarification. As City Manager, part of my responsibility is to follow council direction and ensure that all legislative requests are carried out. The council directed me to bring forward the parking ordinance legislation appearing on tonight's agenda, which, with the intent of being it for introductory purposes only. This introduction is a very important step in our governance as it stimulates open and transparent conversation with the public. How the council chooses to amend the legislation, introduce substitute versions, or take further action is entirely up to the body. And I will always move forward with whatever final decision or version the council adopts. I also want to remind everyone that the intent of the RESPECT study, this is simply not a parking study. It is a comprehensive downtown mobility and access study that will explore ways to enhance wayfinding, signage, pedestrian bicycle access, circulation, overall accessibility, and the utilization of the city's current public parking lots. Now finally, for the updates. So we'll just jump right into parking. Before the August 26 meeting, the pavilion lot was unstriped and disorganized, making any credited parking numbers purely theoretical. Without marked stalls, it could not and should never have been included in any reliable number of downtown parking availability that Palmer has. I made the decision to clearly define the stalls, and they are now in place and in use. This allows the city to measure its true contribution rather than relying on assumptions. The lot is now a functioning part of our inventory, along with the additional parking near the depot. Both operational improvements will strengthen our long-term planning for parking. Code revisions surrounding parking in small communities are nothing new. CITCA adjusted parking enforcement restrictions near the harbor and downtown core, while Valdez modernized its code to allow off-street parking within 600 feet of a business to count toward its parking requirement. Ordinance 24-01 adopted that. This provided businesses flexibility while ensuring accessibility. However, I want to reiterate that I have no direct stake in how the council chooses to proceed with any code revision. My role is simply to implement the direction that is adopted by the council. Let's move on to budget. My administration is preparing recommendations for the upcoming year. Although not yet finalized, the council can expect proposals to include increased personnel in some departments, new capital improvement projects, and updated equipment requests. These investments will help ensure the city continues to provide high-quality services while addressing ongoing infrastructure needs. During the last council meeting, airport lease rates were discussed. And I have an update. On July 8, 2010, the city commissioned Follett and Associates to analyze the fair market value and rent for the Palmer Airport and its land. That analysis is now expired, so a new evaluation is needed. We will coordinate with the FAA and issue an RFP as this is required before lease rates adjustments can be carried out. All lease rates must comply with FAA guidelines and reflect current market conditions. We don't just get to make up lease rates. Now on to the library. While nobody likes delays, we need to take time to answer contractor questions and spacing out deadlines for other projects across the region. This is a very normal part of the bid process. Therefore, the due date for the new library RFP has been extended to October 2, 2025. And finally, on a more celebratory note, this Friday, September 12, at 6:00 p.m., Palmer Fire and Rescue will hold a ceremonial push-in for the city's new Engine 31, which is completing its outfitting and will be placed into service. This tradition of the push-in dates back to the 19th century, when horse-drawn engines could not back into the station and had to be manually pushed by crews. Today, this ceremony honors the history of the fire service while symbolizing teamwork and the commitment to the community we serve. And I invite everyone to join in for this occasion. Thank you.
All right. Is there any questions for the manager? Councilmember Cooper.
Just, just one. Did I miss, where, where do we push? Is it gonna be at the fire station?
Downtown fire station.
Thank you. All right. Next is the Mayor's report. And in my report, I included a couple of, some description and some links to a couple of surveys that are online. One was already mentioned, the RESPECT survey. And then there's another one for the downtown road and right-of-way that were soliciting information from residents. Is there any questions for my report? Okay, City Clerk's report.
I just wanted to remind everyone that we have an election on October 7. We have five candidates for our mayor. We have three candidates for our two, three-year council seats. We have two candidates for our one, one-year council seat. And we do have a proposition regarding the residency requirements for the city manager for a possible change to charter. Just an easy yes or no. So also reminders that early voting begins on September 22 at City Hall. It's Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And that the cutoff for any absentee by mail requests are due by September 26 at 4:00 a.m., or 4:00 p.m. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for the clerk?
I have one, sir.
Councilmember Cooper.
You're saying absentee closes on September 26. Is it open currently right now that people can request absentee ballots?
So they have until September 26 to request.
Thank you. All right. So you know other questions? Madam Attorney.
Yes, good evening. I'll be brief. I've been working with the Human Resources, who's fabulous, by the way. Thank you for that. And the City Manager evaluating some of our personnel hearing processes and timing. So there will likely be in the near future some recommendations for code changes, like, you know, allowing us to serve via email instead of fax and updating some of those procedural issues that we've been wrestling with. So just wanted to let you know that that is coming down the pipe.
Okay. Does the council have any questions for the attorney? Okay. Next, we have Audience Participation. Guessing there's a sign-up sheet up there. Council meeting rules protect your right to testify and be heard, even if others in the room disagree with you. Council meeting rules also ensure that those attending can express their views if they do not interfere with the rights of others to see and hear the proceedings. At all times, order and decorum will be maintained in keeping with the civility and dignity of the legislative process. Please be respectful during audience participation. No disruptions to city business or threats of any kind will be allowed. Individuals who cannot follow these guidelines will be removed. Any threats against others could result in criminal prosecution. Please sign in, state your name, and there's three minutes per person. Thank you, sir. Chuck Kosik.
Good evening. Chuck Kosik, 40-plus-year area resident. And my focus this evening is serving Palmer seniors. First off, I would like to thank all of you for your service. That's, it's complimentary, for sure. And then the other thing I wanted to focus right away on is kudos to the city staff and you folks for the recent physical improvements. Number one, the grade reduction at road crossings. And two, the additional parking. Safety and access, fine job. With these types of successful successes, I am asking for your help. My concern is senior services and programs have been drastically reduced over the past two to three years. This is primarily at Palmer Senior Center. Let me help you focus. I prepared a few bullet points to focus it on. Number one, there has been a significant reduction in programs. If I was to grade this nonprofit, I would say D minus to F. We used to have this vibrant, thriving program and services across the board. Now we're on life support, despite staff pay increases recently. It is an inefficient and underused of a fine community physical facility. And obviously, it's an inverse relationship. Number two, the election is being controlled and has in the past. This year's annual election, specified in the Constitution to occur at a certain process, has now been canceled, despite not having a quorum to make that decision. Number three, admin will not permit access to budget details. Even board members and past presidents are not privy to details. Number four, Congregate Meals, which is the lunch program for many seniors that are on a tight budget and a margin. They used to be run Monday through Friday, Class Four. Four stars in my book. Excuse me, the admin did not even respond to Representative Johnson's offer to fund the entire program last year. The entire program. That's inappropriate. It's extremely difficult to recruit volunteers to lead programs as a result of rudely and poorly, the way they've been rudely and poorly treated. Another recent administration decision was the freezer at the senior center that was funded through a federal grant for food security was turned off. Just a footnote for Palmer, the senior center is one of the emergency disaster centers' locations. Number seven, the highest current use of the facility is when volunteers distribute free outdated food from cars, Monday and Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. Some seniors will be present for one hour, okay? Many for half an hour, what it takes to hand out the food. At 11:55 today, 95% of the people had vacated the center. Take a drive by the senior center some weekday after lunch and note the lack of vehicles in the lot. Have you thought about the upside-down benefit-cost distribution here? It's just absolutely upside down. Reduced overhead costs in programs and services seniors to ensure covering the admin paychecks. There is no accountability for this action. I mean, across the board. All right, as neighbors and council members, I issue a challenge and call to action. The city offers a tax exemption, which is actually de facto funding. Therefore, it must be a concern and be involved. Steve, I request with council support that you authorize the manager to direct the Community Development Director to create a mayor's task force to examine this dire situation. Obviously, it would be made up of in-house staff as well as community.
That's your time, sir.
In closing, the senior community needs justice and it must be met. Any questions, comments?
We don't do that during audience participation.
I'm glad you listened. Thank you.
Sherman. Is it Leifer? Leifer. Yeah, Leifer.
Howdy. Thank you all. My name's Sherman Leifer. I'm one of the owners of the Palmer Bar. I'm here to talk about the parking. Got some issues with just getting rid of the parking ordinances. Currently, we have five seats for every car for bars and restaurants. And that was reduced from four back in 2005. It's a bad idea. You guys have got an RFP out there for, you know, up to $50,000. You haven't received the study yet. And that's fiduciarily irresponsible. You guys need to get the product, make an informed decision. You guys need to get the product, make an informed decision, and that way you can make sure we keep Palmer Palmer. We like the small-town feel of the town. We don't want to be Anchorage, we don't want to be Wasilla. If you were to think about it, you know, if you get rid of that, the ordinance, then everyone's going to be parking on the streets. Now, generally, throughout the day, it's not a big deal. However, on our big event days, i.e. your Friday flings, your Colony Days, Colony Christmas, it's a big deal. We own the bar, we have our own parking in the back. We don't have, we don't put up no parking signs. A lot of people come through and park in our parking lot and go right through to Friday flings and all that. We like that. We appreciate it. At the same point, you know, if this goes away, we're going to have to enforce parking, and that's not going to be good. That's going to lose that small-town feel. Additionally, you know, what's to say, we decided we wanted to go ahead and, you know, if you guys are giving away the parking, well, maybe we'll put something there that we want to do, like maybe we want to put some music there. You know, the Ale House over here, they do a wonderful job, and I'm a very big fan of what they do here, bringing all the people in. There is some issues with parking with them, I'm sure. I mean, anywhere within three blocks on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday of any week, it's pretty evident that there is some issues with it. However, it brings a lot of people and a lot of business to Palmer, and that is wonderful. That being said, if I was to do something like that, I'd be a lot closer to a bunch of residential, and that would be issues. So I think you're opening a can of worms by just throwing it to the wind. You should make an informed decision and use what you, the money you put out there, and that report was for parking. It was for parking and the pedestrian access. I read the RFP. That's kind of what I do for a living, is check out RFPs and bid on things, so. Anyways, thank you for your time. Please take that into consideration, and let's slow down a little. It's okay to slow down, make an informed decision, and do it right once.
Gary Wolf.
Good evening. I'm Gary Wolf, Mayor Farrington, council member, manager of Zerco. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you about ordinance 25004. You all know I've been a Palmer resident for a long time. I've spent my career here in trying to make Palmer a better place, and I know that everyone in this room is here because we want Palmer to be a better place. Want to congratulate you all for, you know, be, knowing, understanding, and I know everybody's aware that there's some parking challenges in Palmer, and that you've spent some money on this new study, and you've worked on increasing the public parking spaces, and that's some great steps. And I, for one, know that meeting the parking requirements is very difficult. It's particularly difficult with new projects and trying to meet the parking and making the project economically viable. We have clients right now that were struggling to meet the parking requirements. It's very difficult, and it needs to be worked on. That said, eliminating all the parking requirements in the CBB for restaurants, bars, and retail, the highest demand uses, is a bit short-sighted and a bit ill-conceived. If a business is attractive, and we want to have businesses in downtown, people are going to come and they are going to park wherever there's places to park, and that's going to be a long-term issue. And a few short years ago, the city promoted and enabled the old Cars Building to be sold to U-Haul. The largest parcel in downtown Palmer is now relegated to mini-storage and, you know, a truck lot. It had a lot of excess parking space. That city, or that lot, will never be probably a viable contribution to downtown Palmer for our lifetime unless U-Haul sells it. And that was done out of the city council wanting to move that lot, and they allowed U-Haul to buy it, and it was a terrible decision, and it was done out of wanting to get something done. No thought was given to it, or very little thought. So this ordinance is a Band-Aid solution for expediency, probably. It doesn't have to be done that quickly. I would really caution to take a little bit of time and look it over. We're not Anchorage, we're not Wasilla, and we're not Eagle River. We have really small lots here. We don't have very many lots that can be used for private parking, and so that needs to be considered, that we can't do the same thing they do. So anyway, I would encourage you all to just slow down on this, passing the ordinance, and just take a look at that new study you had and take that into consideration, and I really appreciate you all allowing us to talk. Thank you.
Michelle Kincaid.
Michelle Kincaid, and I'm against this ordinance making required, making required parking zero. It's wrong to exempt highest users and disenfranchise everyone. July 16th, we met with the manager Zerco, and she disclosed Palmer didn't need parking regulations. Colby stated, "In Anchorage, her family had businesses with no parking and did just fine." Palmer is not Anchorage. With parking meters, every other block paid downtown parking and parking garages. July 31st, Victoria asked somebody to text parking about parking, gave number to call. I was merged into this call. Councilwoman Hudson accused manager Zerco and the attorney Hayth of conspiring towards a parking workaround. Victoria spoke close to an hour, asked not to be named. I stayed silent until the ordinance exposed her motives. Palmer deserves better, and evidence shows both behavior on their part. Manager Zerco misled the council and public that the P&amp;B study wasn't looking at code. Study group Respect email says partial plan aims to evaluate the curtain parking code and conditions. The depot needed those 919 new spots. It's fire-rated for over 400 people, requiring a lot of parking spaces. You guys are applauding yourselves for removing handicap spaces and calling those new. The Palmer park, the public parking is vital to Palmer events, and it should be spread out throughout Palmer to benefit all. The recent library closure parking shows the domino effect, and that is a tiny to what the no-code would do. Manager Zerco, you untruthfully claimed 50 new parking spaces. You did not look at the 23 report. Existing showed 26 at the pavilion, 15 at the end of the depot. Even more cars parked past the lights and beside the tracks. Why false 50 matters? Because whoever created the ordinance used that false information. This is nefarious behavior by Hudson and Zerco, especially with the study in progress. Why fast-tracked it? Why give an exemption to provide any parking to bars, restaurants, and all retail? Imagine Fred Meyers if they didn't even were required to have one parking space. What about the small shops? If you're going to give away parking, give all the street parking exclusively to the businesses that affront. September 5th, I emailed Kelsey with respect to cancel my scheduled interview because of Hudson and Zerco's actions. The email shared what they were doing, accusations Hudson said about Zerco. Kelsey called me in the morning to cancel my interview. I felt compelled to tell her what happened. The call dropped once, and Kelsey called me back. I'm kind of curious, Hudson, how did you get access to the phone record of the parking plan? I know I didn't give you my personal phone records, but I'm curious, did you use a FOIA or how did you get the information? Kelsey already said a city employee had forwarded the ordinance to her.
That's your time.
City of Palmer, give out the email. Everybody should go and talk to this planning group. Everybody's welcome to call and talk, and if you feel like Palmer's doing good, it's because we have current codes, and it matters. And I'm sorry, but that is what happened, and that is the truth. Thank you.
Janet Kincaid.
I'm somewhat handicapped. I can't walk very well, but by golly, I can drive, so here I am. I'm probably the oldest person in this room, and certainly one of the longest-time business owners. We bought the Valley Hotel in 1976 as a family. The first thing I did was meet with Dan Contini, who was in Fire Chief, and pattern out how the parking would work for the hotel. There actually was a driveway between the Kozowski building and the hotel. We quickly eliminated that and added parking. When the lot behind the hotel came up for sale, I nabbed it quickly, because it didn't take very long to discover I needed off-street parking for my business to thrive. Forward on, the Kincaids are entrepreneurs through and through. I made a list and discovered there's at least nine businesses within the city limits that are involved with the Kincaid family. So we have a vested interest in Palmer and in the parking. I see the parking is critical. I was really excited when the council voted to do a parking study for $50,000 worth of taxpayers' dollars. I was tickled. When I heard that we were, the city was fast-tracking to eliminate the parking, in spite of not getting the results from the parking study, I was appalled. So I would hope that the council slows down, takes a look at this. A business, a large business in Palmer recently sold, and it was purchased by a business that has a couple of businesses in Anchorage. One of the things that made it attractive, off-street parking. Off-street parking is very important to a business to make it thrive. So I hope you give that consideration, and thank you very much.
Linda Combs.
I always come prepared, that's why you have in front of you what I'm going to speak about. I don't want you to have to try to look up anything. My name is Linda Combs. I live at 335 East Melissa Rose Court, here in Palmer. I've been a resident for 39 years. My credentials will take longer than the three minutes that are allotted to me, so I'm just going to forego that. However, I know that all of you that I am addressing this evening know of my decades-long involvement in the city of Palmer's business growth and character. I am prepared to speak tonight to inform you and the public about an important issue that I believe requires attention. I am here primarily to remind each and every one of you in front of me that, as well as all those that are hearing my voice or reading my words, you need to be reminded that I, just like you, swore an oath to serve this community by observing, upholding, and adhering to all laws and codes pertaining to our municipality. Copies of the relevant codes that I'm referring to are provided for reference, so you don't have to research for those. Tonight's agenda item concerning parking codes was included contrary to existing municipal regulation. Please be advised that the final sentence on those reference codes on each one of those pages is as follows. The Palmer Municipal Code is current through ordinance 25-003 and legislation passed July 22nd, 2025 by you people. What this says to any reasonable citizen of our city is that every one of you, just a matter of weeks ago, we were reading these codes, and therefore it can be concluded that every one of you is aware of the lawful and proper procedure as it's been codified. And yet, two council members made a request to unlawfully change this code and placed a code change in an improper procedure on tonight's agenda. And those responsible for approving that agenda and allowing it to go forward also permitted this proposal to proceed. Those responsible individuals are the three employees of the city council, the city clerk, the city attorney, and the city manager. It's exceedingly difficult to believe that this was done without any or all of these individuals being aware that the addition of this agenda item was improper and, in fact, unlawful. Our community deserves better than this. I once again want to charge each and every one of you with taking a long, hard look at your actions. I ask you to remember that oath that you took, promising to take care of this community, and plead with you to go forward, attempting at the very least to do better. I can assure you that your neighbors, your constituency, and the voters are all going to be vigilantly looking to you to do just that. Tonight, I don't care what re-characterization or rhetoric you used to make the move on the agenda that you did, it didn't make it any more lawful than what I'm referring to. I thank you for your time this evening. I thank you for your service. May God bless you, and hopefully, your renewed efforts to serve Palmer in the manner that you have promised and the manner that each and every one of us deserve.
Lori Koppenberg.
I've got to situate this just right, so give me a minute so I can put my glasses on and see and read and speak into the mic so everybody can hear me. Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Lori Koppenberg. I'm here tonight to share my opposition to O.R. 25-004. For clarification, I was going to state what P&amp;Z actually did so that city manager Zerco truly knows the facts. Apparently, she doesn't know how to read it, RFP. Our P&amp;Z commissioner is here to share that with you, so I won't go into it. Parking matters or it doesn't? This code change eliminates all parking requirements for restaurants and retail. A restaurant that seats hundreds, or a retail that could be tens of thousands of square feet, can move into the central business district and open up shop without the need to provide parking for any of its guests, staff, or shoppers. Where will they park? Does this city have enough street parking and public parking to accommodate this type of severe change? How does this impact the other businesses that front street parking? Does this council really believe that the depot parking lot, the library parking lot, and the 26 pavilion parking spots that have always been there support this type of unfettered growth with zero infrastructure to support this? Does the city plan to charge any new business for the use of public parking, or will the taxpayers foot the bill for new businesses that have zero parking? Or will the city look to implement a paid parking situation like they do in Anchorage? This drastic code change would devastate Palmer for years to come, not only in the downtown core, where most businesses are located, but this will also bleed over to the residential areas of the central business district. If you don't know where that is, look at 17640500. It outlines where you live, and if you're down by Blueberry or anywhere in there, you are impacted. The Lower 48, when parking requirements are eliminated, require residents that live in those areas are eventually forced to obtain parking permits so they can park in front of their homes. Palmer has seen exponential growth the last several years. Even through the growth, Palmer has managed to hold on to what makes us unique and special, the historical charm and the walkability of our town. Unfettered growth equals unintended consequences. And I also want to mention, councilmember Graver, I'm not sure how you pulled a 180 from your comments of 121724, a 180, young lady. Thankfully, Palmer is not Anchorage. With controlled growth and sensible code, we can keep it that way. We love our town, and we intend to fight to keep it who we are and not let anybody come in from Anchorage or any other city or state and change who we are. We love our town. Thank you.
Scott Lindblom.
My name is Scott Lindblom. I've been a key dog for my last, just a bit of law, P&amp;Z council, and the parking lot ADA, parking lot concession. I would thank for Kobe to do this. September 29th, I'm going to have a meeting with state legislature, House of Representatives. This is ADA certification training. This will be a new law we'll pass next year. This would be out, duty be out, non-proper organization. 53 seed will be have ADA contributor, 15 or 50 blockers. This is a nationwide having issue with outdoor permit discriminate. I do not discriminate against you. You discriminate against us. But good news is... But, good news is, I talked to graduate school, University of Anchorage. And they don't have ADA professor to teach the course. And who will be ADA coordinator and city plumber have to take ADA certification program. Next year, the ongoing to pass disability organization can pass this bill to state legislature. I have about twenty-five state legislature on council disability. And I got federal on the October sixth or seventh. I got apartment transportation, Title forty-nine, federal resolution beyond there. We are doing pretty good. We are complaining about outdoor events discriminating people in disability. And I've talked to everybody in Anchorage, Chamber, Mcdonald's, everybody have to have ADA coordinator, non-profit organization. This is the Title Two, and I'm reading is how you review a license in, uh, in our development. And I've talked to everybody about this, to how to review a license. I've been doing this fourteen years experience, seven, three states. And, uh, and I'm, and we do not have transportation by the board and city plumber, but Mount D'Bro got one. And I've been thanked for Sina, the HR, is ADA coordinator, Title Six. So, um, September twenty-ninth, how we meet with all the state legislature, House of Senate, and we are going to write new bill next year on twenty-twenty-six. All ADA coordinator, non-profit organizations have to take it. If they don't, they will get fines. That should be in my bill. I could do it, I got loaded, and Anchorage, County, Disability Law, County is helping. I'm really excited about the, because this is not unfair for us getting discrimination, we cannot do.
Frank Bell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Frank Bell. You've heard from some of the longest-standing business owners of Palmer, and now you're going to hear from very likely as the shortest. I am the owner of Palmer Brewing Company, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for you guys' consideration for our letter of non-objection to the State of Alaska. It gets us one step closer to opening day. And we are hard at work remodeling our taproom, getting the brewery into shipshape and Bristol fashion. We have our first shipment of ingredients and packaging materials on the way, and our canning line arrived yesterday. So we're on target to open in early November or potentially as late as early December. But anyway, just wanted to say thanks. If anybody out there wants updates, obviously, you can follow us on social media, Instagram, Facebook, everything else. But I appreciate it very much, and thank you. And we have plenty of parking.
Thanks. Wesley Hart. Wesley J.
Wesley Artz, Palmer Bar. I'm against rushing the whole parking issue. One of the things is, where's the handicap parking on Main Street? For the businesses that don't have, already don't have parking. Maybe we should look at code enforcement for the parking that's already there. One of the things, if you're going to make the businesses the bad guys in all this, and where we have to control our parking lot, how about you guys charge for parking on Main Street then? And charge for it. It's a good way for you guys to make money. Because you guys don't have money. It's like you're spending it, but we need to figure out how to make money to catch our city workers up to the rest of the communities around us. That's one of the things is that, um, also, is the rush on this is because people have bigger political ambitions? Is that why this is pushing through so fast? Because people want something farther up, or they're doing a favor for someone? Yeah, pay to, we're paying to have the study done. Let's see what the study says. Let's look at some of the other things that's happening. The problem with some of the stuff on Main Street is because there are people that park all day out on Main Street. But the businesses suffer because if they can't go into a retail shop and have an hour, so limit the parking to two hours on Main Street. That'll mean more cars turnover and people aren't parked there for eight hours because employees are parking in front of shops. Because these businesses don't have parking. But look at code enforcement. There's some of the biggest, some of the people with the biggest parking areas are here tonight going, hey, don't throw away the regulation because we are going to be the bad guys in all this. That's why we want you to really look at this. We don't want to close down our parking lots. And so I go, come into the bar all the time and go, wait, wait a minute. I got three people in the car in the bar, but I have twenty spots full in my parking lot. And so that's a major issue. Is, yeah, we do have crossover, but do code enforcement on this. Uh, there's a parking lot behind Eagle Hotel. That's not mode that is supposed to be a parking area for that business. Yet, all their customers park out in the street. Something to think about. Okay, thank you.
Jackie Goforth.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jackie Goforth. I consider myself an information suck. That's what I do, is sucking information. And usually, it's retained. Unfortunately, that's why Analem, Analec, and Mentaka are the three stars of the Orion's Belt. There is stuff in my head I don't want to know. You know, I went to Tuketina today to the library meeting at one PM, and it was wonderful drive, it always is, even in the rain. And afterwards, I went down some road for grants, and I found the Luthman Trail that led four and a half miles into something called Montana Waterfall. And if I hadn't had to be here, I toyed with going. But you know what happened because I wasted that time? I hit Wasilla at five o'clock. Now, I don't know if you know what Wasilla looks like at five o'clock, even when you're coming eastbound. That's what unbridled growth does, and that's what we really, really, really prize here at Palmer and will fight to hold on to. And I don't know, as Wesley just said, whether it's somebody needs favors or somebody's on a political thing. But you know, somebody in here actually has an email listed as a mayor of the name of the business that's got the problem with parking. Isn't that weird? You know something else? There is not allowed signage on DOT property in Matsu. There isn't. And yet, every parent driving their child to Palmer High that goes up Hammer and then up Moose, Palmer Moose Drive, is, gets, gets to see a sign that says "Somebody for Mayor." So I want you to know that there is property right there that nobody even owns. See, Shilay Drive used to have a loop out. It's actually in all the plans. That's a driveway. So everybody who's running for mayor, I would stick your sign up there, okay? So they see all five of you. Because the amount of people seeing just one person for mayor is huge. I know, I walk my dog at seven. If you go seven to eight in the morning, you see how many people are there. And if you go at two o'clock in the afternoon on Bogard, don't make a left turn. Let's just put it that way, okay? And even if you make a right turn, you're not. Unbridled growth is a problem, and not having parking is a problem. But since we threw money away, I mean, we already threw money away on the ex-city manager. Why are we throwing money away on a parking thing? Didn't we say we were going to spend fifty thousand to find out parking? And yet, now we're going to jump the gun because maybe it's because there's an election? And we need to have something big? I mean, I don't know. You tell me. But please, if you're going to go up the Palmer Moose Drive, go up it. And you'll see there's only one sign there, and there should be five. There really should. All of you should have them there. I mean, if it's, if it's, if you're going to put it up there and you're going to ignore the rules, nobody owns that property. And I know he didn't ask the person who owns that property because I know who it is. But there is a spot there that used to be, it's supposed to be for an exit. Shilay Drive's not supposed to be a cul-de-sac, it's supposed to be a loop. So that spot is open. Put all the signs up there you want to. Did I make it? Yes. Thank you.
Tom Robertson. Roberson.
Thank you. My name is Tom Robertson. And over the fifty-two years I've been in Alaska, twenty-five have been right here in Palmer. But I'm smart enough to recognize the leadership and the longevity of the business owners who's made Palmer what it is. And I definitely hope you honor and respect the wisdom that you've heard tonight from Janet Kincaid and her daughter Michelle. They've been around a long time, they know what they're doing, and they want the best for the Palmer. And that's why Palmer's is what it is. So the second item of business I want to mention, I still want to put a memorial outside the city hall for the fire, the policeman who was slain in nineteen ninety-nine named Jim Roland. I want to move his memorial right there by the flagpole. I think it's the least the city could do when one of their members have been slain. I mean, yeah, the very least. It would be a disgrace not to honor him and show the dignity for a peace offer that gave his life. And the third, a third item of business I want to talk about is I'm still want to put the fire hydrant back at mile thirty-seven of the Glenna Highway. That's the new part that's under construction. Uh, there's a water main that goes underneath the Glenna Highway to the hospital. There was a hydrant there. I wanted to have a, what I call, emergency fill station for the fire department so fire truck can pull in off the highway, fill up, and take off. One fireman, one truck, boom, and then they're gone. It's that quick. When you don't have that, then you get a lot of people alongside of it. I, I taught firefighting at the Community College in Keene High, and they sent me down to the State Trooper Academy to be an EMT instructor for the state. So I've been, I know what emergencies are. I know what causes accidents, and I know how to prevent them. And I strongly urge you, put the fire hydrant back in the ground where it was. Like I said before, my mother, if my mother did, she'd jump out of the grave and tell you, put your, leave, put it alone, leave it alone if it's not yours, and keep your filthy paws off of it. That's what my mother would say. If I got more time, I'll tell you more. She used to, she used to throw a rolling pin too. You know how much those things hurt? Wow, if we got to the age we couldn't, she couldn't catch us when we run away, but a rolling pin would catch us. All right. Please honor the wisdom in here the Palmer has and the leadership. They're here for a good reason. Thank you.
Penny Mosher.
So good evening, I'm Penny Mosher. I'm also the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. For months, we have heard about the city parking. We've heard a lot of ideas. We've heard a lot about the municipal code. We've heard a lot about the city of Aldis, the city of Seward, the city of Anchorage, as well as the city of Soldatna. This Planning and Zoning Commission could not make a decision. The reason we couldn't was because there were so many intricate weaves that comes with the city of Palmer and the tradition. So tonight, I am going to just issue a statement of concern regarding Title seventeen-sixty-four dot-five-zero and the International Zoning Code. As Chair of the Palmer Planning and Zoning Commission, I offer reflection on Title seventeen point-six-four point-five-zero, which permits the waiver of a parking requirement in the central business district to encourage redevelopment. This provision honors Palmer's historic walkability, compact plating. It raises important concerns when evaluated against the International Zoning Code and the level, and the lived realities of our agricultural landscape. Palmer's downtown was designated in the nineteen thirties with the human scale grid. Smaller blocks, narrower lots, and walkable streets that reflect a pre-automobile ethos. Unlike larger cities whose zoning codes anticipate parcels of ten to twenty thousand square feet or more, Palmer's typical downtown lot is often under five thousand square feet. The scale is not constraints, it's a legacy. But it's, does, but it does complicate the application of modern land use standards. Architects and developers face real challenges fitting contemporary commercial uses into historic parcels while meeting dimensional and parking requirements. Navigating Title seventeen point-six-four point-five-zero's waiver provision, which may unintentionally invite high turnover uses that strain neighborhood characters and infrastructure. We're already seeing this today with the commercial creep into our once neighborhood areas. When you take the International Code and its calibration, a restaurant, one parking per one hundred gross feet, retail, one space per two hundred gross feet, square feet, general office, one space per three hundred gross feet, and assembly space of one space per three hundred gross feet. You apply this to Palmer scale as a five thousand square foot restaurant, which would require fifty parking spaces, a physical impossibility on most downtown lots. May I complete this? Thank you. Title seventeen point-six-four-five-zero allows for waivers but without the use of specific thresholds or mitigation requirements. It risks overburning residential edges and undermining Palmer's legacy character. I ask that you hold off on this resolution, twenty-five dash zero-zero-four, because the Planning and Zoning asked you months ago for the parking study. You granted that. The reason we wanted to sit back and ask for that study was to take that study and apply it to the municipal code and change that at that time. That is still what we intend to do. It is still on the very forefront of what we do every day on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Many of these people in here, I've actually gotten to listen to and talk to for months. And I value their input, and they are part of the reason we asked for this study to begin with. So thank you.
We'll close audience particip, this audience participation. There's no public hearings. Next is Action Memorandum number twenty-five dash zero-seven-seven, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a three-year contract with option for two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We'd like to ask for a break, a restroom break, please.
Okay, sure, let's take a short break.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, uh, I'm doing it, uh, I have a meeting with help, what is it under?
Do you have an ADA?
I have the ADA certification in July, so everybody have to take it out and non-publicization. To lack discrimination, get sooner, and better with disability, can I get into outdoor event?
Okay.
Because, uh, because you are sooner, you are better people, cannot get in. So, an outdoor event, a chamber cannot have ADA background, shut down, street closure, for nothing. And they cannot follow rules, so they have to take ADA certification or they will get bites.
I'll keep an eye out for it.
Doctor, maybe, uh.
Well, do we have one, two, three, four, five?
There was a line in the women's bathroom, that's why.
Oh, okay.
I still like a line.
There's only two, there was like a line.
There's two, there's only two.
Was it, they only have like two stalls?
Yeah.
The guys have two stand-up.
I moved for council, I moved for council support.
I couldn't, I couldn't remember. Oh, there is two.
Yeah.
I hear you.
All right.
Let's see. One, two, three, four, five.
Who am I missing? Oh, six.
The ref is still on.
It is frustrating. It is.
Okay. Do we have a quorum at the mics, anyway? Almost. Yeah. Yes. All right. So... Getting home.
It's, I can't keep my microphone on because I'm ectolique.
Yeah.
Can you turn it down?
All right.
It's ectolique.
Okay. All right. We're back from the break. Back to action memorandum. Uh, action memorandum under twenty-five dash zero seven seven, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a three-year contract with the option for two one-year extensions with HDL Engineering Consultants LLC for engineering services for the city of Palmer's water and wastewater system. Uh, do we, what's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Is there any discussions or questions from council? Councilmember Alkantra.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, no real questions. I mean, HDL's been doing good work for us for a long time. Uh, one of the things I always like to point out is it's always great when a company has a Palmer base, and that really helps put me on a good path in making sure that they're going to do great work for the city. I found it, I can't, I can't quote the page number to you, but when I was reading the packet, uh, a couple days ago, one of the things I found most hilarious was where it said that HDL offices, uh, a one-minute drive from Public Works Department, are a two-minute bike ride, are three minutes of flying cop sacks running it. So, it's four, it's four tenths of a mile, and anybody who knows the cop sacks know that, uh, he'd have no problem at all polishing off that in, uh, three minutes or less. So, uh, yeah, I found that kind of a, a nice little, uh, in, insert that they had in their pages and pages and pages of, uh, resumes and, and backdrop of their employees, and, uh, yeah, I think, uh, I think they do a great job for us.
All right. Any other comments or questions from council? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Approved?
Uh, next is Action Memorandum number twenty-five dash zero seven eight, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with Ficklin Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents per hour per truck for snow hauling service. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Alkantra.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I am guessing that this is the first year that, uh, Ficklin Construction LLC will be having a snow removal contract with us.
Madam Manager?
I'm unsure of their past contracting, snow plowing services with us. Um, I haven't heard of them doing that before, and I'm getting a confirmation.
Follow.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Manager. Um, yeah, I just hadn't heard, haven't heard of Ficklin Construction and/or the others, to be quite honest. I'm just, uh, always a little nervous when, uh, that percentage of money gets left on the table, so, uh, I'm, I'm glad they got a con, a legit, uh, contract that is, uh, at that bit amount, but, uh, it always, uh, it always causes a hair in the back of my neck to stand up a little bit when that kind of money's left on the table. So, uh, I, I applaud them, and, uh, definitely will be a vote in the affirmative, but I just, uh, I just noticed how much, how much differential there was.
Uh, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Uh, is there a, um, I didn't see it, was there a cap on this? We have ninety-one seventy-five. Is there going to be a, do we, is, do we have a guestimate on how many dollars we might spend? Obviously, it depends on how bad the winter is, but, I mean, are we, are we guessing it's X number of dollars?
We don't have an actual estimate because it is based on need, not a projected how the snow's going to fall. So each year will be different, but we do have a not to exceed of ninety-one seventy-five per hour.
Okay, so we don't have a budget amount of, pick a number, a hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand, twenty thousand. It just, and now it just, as it go, as it, as it happens, is when you...
The, for this particular contract, no, but we do budget for snow removal in our normal typical budget process that the council approves each year. This would fall underneath that, and as we're working for the twenty-twenty-six budget, you'll see that same line item.
All right, thank you.
And I suspect if there's still snow on the roads, then we would still hire them, even if it was past the budget.
Oh, believe me, I'll get the snow removed if I have to.
All right. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, are you ready to vote? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Approved?
All right. There's no unfinished business. Uh, new business, we'll go with the item number one listed, is, uh, Resolution twenty-five dash zero three nine, a resolution of the Palmer City Council appointing election officials for the city of Palmer regular election on October seventh, Tuesday, October seventh, twenty-twenty-five. What's the wishes of the council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from council?
Uh, yes, Madam Attorney.
I would like to provide some code clarification. Um, there seems to be some quick questions regarding processes, so, um, and available for questions, of course, from the council. But, uh, seventeen point eight zero point one zero is entitled an initiation procedure for a zoning map amendment, which this is not, or a PMC Title VII zoning code text amendment. That may be initiated by A, the council, and, um, and then B, the commission, which would refer to the planning commission, and then there's several other options, including individuals' processes for bringing that forward. In order for anything to ever be discussed by the council, it has to be placed upon the agenda and then discussed by the council. So, uh, putting something that is the only process, like, we do not allow the council to strategize anything behind closed doors, behind anything, the fact that's an OMA violation. So, in order for the council to put something forward and send it to, to bring it up for public discussion, or to send it to the planning and zoning, by code seventeen eight point zero one says the council can do that, it has to be put on an agenda, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Do you have any questions or comments from council?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
It's approved.
All right. Uh, next, I guess, the second item, which I didn't clarify that when we started on all this, uh, would be ordinance number twenty-five dash zero zero four, an introduction.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, Madam Attorney.
I would like to provide some code clarification. Um, there seems to be some quick questions regarding processes, so, um, and available for questions, of course, from the council. But, uh, seventeen point eight zero point one zero is entitled an initiation procedure for a zoning map amendment, which this is not, or a PMC Title VII zoning code text amendment. That may be initiated by A, the council, and, um, and then B, the commission, which would refer to the planning commission, and then there's several other options, including individuals' processes for bringing that forward. In order for anything to ever be discussed by the council, it has to be placed upon the agenda and then discussed by the council. So, uh, putting something that is the only process, like, we do not allow the council to strategize anything behind closed doors, behind anything, the fact that's an OMA violation. So, in order for the council to put something forward and send it to, to bring it up for public discussion, or to send it to the planning and zoning, by code seventeen eight point zero one says the council can do that, it has to be put on an agenda, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Do you have any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also just want to clarify that in bringing this forward, it's because this city council, um, is not supposed to be discussing things, um, like, I'm not supposed to discuss things with more than two council members. In doing so, clearly, as the city attorney just stated, would be a clear OMA violation, which is a recallable offense. So, if anybody at this dais happened to discuss, any more than three of you happened to discuss with the same business owner, other council members, um, you know, planning on what you guys were going to do tonight, or bringing forward how you were going to vote, that would also be then a recallable OMA violation, which is extremely concerning. Um, and I also want to clarify that, again, it's really strange, I guess I would like an answer, um, Mr. Mayor, as to why me bringing this forward, um, where in code it says that you could rule, uh, to have it removed off of an agenda.
Um, well, as I mentioned at the beginning, I consider this kind of a administrative snafu, um, because my, my reading of, of the code is that it was supposed to, these things are supposed to go to P and Z first and then come to the council. So, I was trying to figure out how to correct, you know, what I think was, uh, an improper direction of it, because, you know, so about that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I guess that my, um, if I may...
Yes, go ahead and continue.
Um, my concern would be that if we have a concern with how things are placed on the agenda as a council member, we wouldn't come forward and rule against another council member bringing it forward and tell them that it was illegal, or, um, let the community or business owners think that it was, uh, something that was brought forward unlawfully so that there was claims against the city, we would then go...
I'd like to have a point of order, please.
I, I'm, what am I doing wrong?
Okay. We're here, we're here to discuss the, um, the ordinance and not whether or not the, the mayor had the ability to remove it or not, that's, uh, that's off, out of the scope of what we're here to talk about.
Well, and actually, to be clear, we're don't, we're not actually here to discuss this ordinance, we were discussing the process.
Right.
That's what, if I, if, I, I believe, but...
And I'm discussing the process of this being on the agenda.
Okay.
So, if that was a concern, we would go to our city attorney and ask her the legalities of it being on the agenda before a council meeting, to make sure that it was legal before declaring to the room that it could not be legal, and putting the city in a liability situation.
I didn't say it was illegal, I said it was inappropriate, because the code's very specific about it should be routed to the P and Z, at least the code that I was looking at.
And Madam Attorney, can you please, um, again, clarify for this council whether...
Okay, hold on.
............
What, what is the, okay, what would a motion?
...........................................................................
Basically, my understanding is the motion is to approve or to be on the agenda for introduction. So, the council can really only discuss whether it's appropriate to introduce it for public hearing or not, not discuss the actual merits of the ordinance.
May I ask you a question of the clerk?
Yes.
So, does that mean we can, so does that mean we can't make an amendment to this?
At this time, you could make an amendment. So, then you could amend it, you could amend, yes.
Okay. And I'd like to make an amendment to that motion, to, I would like to move to postpone this until we get the traffic and pedestrian study back before us.
So, I, we have to have a time specific, so it would be either, yeah.
Well, he said after the...
All right, I'd like to make a motion to postpone indefinitely then.
All right. So, a motion to postpone indefinitely, okay. Is there any council comments or discussion? Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that this is brought forward for us to discuss, nothing has been decided. We can amend this however we want, we can do, we can have the public come forward and tell us what they think, and I'm thankful that you guys have, and we're listening to that, and we, I mean, our heart behind it, I can speak for myself at least, is to improve Palmer and grow well, and that's why we're here to listen to what you guys have to say. And so, nothing has been decided, and we're open to different amendments of this item, or, you know, if we need to slash it altogether, we will, it's just we're, it's a process. And so, when we brought this forward and when I seconded it, it's because we see that parking is an issue and we're looking at different ways to address that. So, I just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think part of the testimony tonight, and what I take the most facts from, is the fact that we need to slow down, and this doesn't appear to me from what was handed out, that the process has been going the way it should have gone. So, not just because of my favorite senior citizen in Palmer, but because of all the folks that testified, I do think motion to postpone indefinitely seems a little harsh. I wish there was a date that we knew we were gonna get the study back, but I think that's the best course of action at this point.
Madam Manager?
Per the RFP and barring any complications, this study is set to wrap up at the end of November. I would allow some time for them to put together their data and present the study to us, and then perhaps pick a date sometime in January for this to be reintroduced, if that is the wishes of the council. If the study's not done by then, you can also at that time vote to postpone to another date in February or March, if that is the intent.
Councilmember Cooper?
Then it would be appropriate, if I would change mine, if it was okay with a second, that postpone until the meeting on January twenty-seventh, pending the results of the traffic pedestrian study.
Second concurs, okay. Is there other questions or comments from council? Okay, so this is a motion to postpone till January twenty-seventh? Okay, good.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, if I may?
Oh, yes, Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to clarify, we don't have any idea when the study is going to be completed?
Madam Manager?
Per the RFP, it's end of November, I believe, right around Thanksgiving time for Yuma. I was just looking at that earlier, but, again, that's the conclusion of it, and then I would respectfully allow them to put together the report, compile it, and then allow us to present to the council.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize that's what you were addressing, okay.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll to postpone till January twenty-seventh?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Erby?
Yes.
Mayor Carrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkantra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Graver?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
Yes.
Approved.
All right. Record of items placed on the table. Okay. Next, audience participation. We'll open our second audience participation. Anyone wishing to speak, you have three minutes, please start with your name, and I guess I'll write your name down. The clerk?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is David Wilson. I am Representative for the Matsu Health Foundation, and thank you for the pass to Palmer as a Wasilean. Tonight, I'm here to address a couple, two things. One, just, you'll all receive an email invitation, so you have plenty of time to notice that for a, we don't have any Open Meetings Act violations, for our Matsu measures. Matsu Health Foundation collects data from all different types of sources, from CDC, from Burfus, from FEMA, and we compile it all together to provide Matsu elected officials, grantees, just wonderful health information, and other data statistics about the Matsu borough. Technically, it's, we get the data set from the entire state, but we parse it out and map it out for the Matsu borough. So, this is interactive maps and display to help the unique characteristics for every part of the borough. It's one of our newest tools, that's there to put out the data of the health and the trends of the Matsu residents, and this dashboard is there, it's currently on our website now, you can go through there, but we'll offer formal training for elected officials here, probably at the beginning, mid of October, after your elections, and so we have an opportunity to get everyone up and trained, if those would like to choose so. Also, delivered to the clerk, is a film screening that is in partnership with CCS Early Learning and MISCA, Matsu Services for Children, Adults, and our own Wasilla representative Jubilee Underwood. The screening was done in June, but it's about ILP, which is about the most vulnerable children. This film was done with the Matsu resident and their child, and talks about how they navigate through the sort of the ILP, the infant learning program, and fighting for the healthy development of our youngest and vulnerable Alaskans. This film screening is on Wednesday, February, I'm sorry, Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, at five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. Dinner's provided, it will be at Valley Cinemas, and just, we just ask people to sort out our RCP, so we can know, make sure we get a good food count quality for folks, and again, that's Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, five-thirty to seven-thirty, and we'll also send you a formal email invite, so you guys, again, feel free to notice it with the clerk, so we can have more than three of you guys attend. Thanks again.
Good evening, it's Penny Mosher again. I want to thank you for your vote in postponing the resolution this evening regarding the traffic study and the parking in downtown. I commend all of you, managers circle, thank you for looking beyond what we could see in the planning and zoning and creating those fifty parking spots. I'm sure the residents enjoy it. I know that, as I'm still recovering through cancer, I have a hard time walking, but I still, you know, when Poppy Lane opened, I walked three blocks during chemo treatment, just to go there and enjoy it. I, but, I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, so, good luck to you guys, thanks.
Well, it's my time to come clean. I'm gonna talk about SOAP. Who are you? I mean, you all know SOAP. I know it in a different way. Maybe forty, fifty years ago, I was privileged to be around a guy in Burlington, Vermont, physician who developed what is referred to as the Problem Oriented Record System. And if any of you have been involved with either medical things or counseling, you may know that that process uses an acronym called SOAP, S-O-A-P. And as I was listening tonight, I realized that you would come around to coming clean, because S in that SOAP means subjective. The idea was that you would invite people who were going to be affected by whatever treatment you're giving, or whatever else you were doing, to provide a subjective, this is how I feel, this is how it affects our business, and all the rest of it. Objective is a different thing. That was something that you provide by, oh, maybe doing a study, gathering data, getting information that was specific, so that it would validate some of the things that people felt, or thought they saw, but maybe really didn't. That was followed by A, an assessment, and that idea was that you would take both the subjective and the assessment, and objective, and put it together for an assessment, to come up with an idea. And then last P for SOAP was plan, then you would plan and act. And as I was listening and looking at this agenda, I keep coming back to something that both Janet and Linda said, and others, why the rush when you're doing a study that presumably is going to give you the objective information that will validate all of the objective, the subjective feelings that people have? Why not do that? It felt to me as if the timing was off. This was a great discussion to have, but the way you were going to present it would be presumably based upon whatever that assessment was. And that's all I wanted to say. For me, it was a very helpful tool to use, whenever looking at anything that would maybe be considered a problem, that you would SOAP it, and that would result in a much better solution than if you were just working on a bit of data, a bit. One last thing, and this is the important part, when it was done in a medical setting, say, at a hospital, it meant that everybody working with a patient on a particular problem that was presenting, would have an opportunity to contribute to that. So, that objective, that objective information would come from many people, and that's what you're looking at, I think. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Mesa Burstall, and you'll have to forgive me, because I have no idea what I'm doing. I just recently started coming to these council meetings, because I have gotten the great privilege and opportunity to become a business owner here in Palmer, and I could not have done that with this, without the support of the community and multiple business owners in Palmer as well. And I just wanted to say, with regards to the parking discussion that has been hotly debated, I have had a lot of conversations outside with just community members, people who've come into my shop, people I've seen on the street, and they have a lot of other opinions than we heard here tonight. I think that it's all good and well, we definitely should get all the information that we can, and, you know, with this postponement, I'm glad we have a date to discuss it again, but I think that the general consensus among many people that I've spoken to, is that this problem with parking has not only kept Palmer small, which I think is something we all agree is something we want, but it has suppressed small businesses from coming into Palmer, even people who belong in Palmer and should be here to open their doors and to help support our local economy. I know that you can't help but notice how many vacant buildings there are on Main Street when you drive through, and I can only think that any way that we can get local Palmeranians to come in and have businesses would be a benefit to us, and if that's removing some parking requirements, I think there's a lot of people in Palmer who might not be here tonight to say anything, but they would be supportive of that. I know, yeah, they're not here, but there's a lot of people who have said similar things to me, and I just wanted to come out and, and say that, because I think we've heard very one side of the issue. Yeah, thank you for letting me speak and for doing what you guys are doing.
Hello again, Jackie Goforth, and you thought I wouldn't talk about books. You know, I was at the Telkina Library today at one o'clock, and they have a list of books that they're to go through to decide which ones the librarians should buy and which ones they shouldn't, and of course, they're still trying to figure out how to do that, how to decide which ones, okay? But what a lot of people seem to think is that if you don't decide to get a book, then you're censoring. They'll give you these books and they say, oh, you're censoring. But then the chairman came out and said, okay, wait a minute, there were thirty thousand books published last month, and I only see that you're ordering three hundred and seventy-four. So, that means twenty-six thousand some odd, six hundred of them, you just censored, right? I mean, you do see how this works, okay? I mean, he made sense. The other thing is, two years ago, when I first started challenging books, every single group that I sat in front of committee said that there was nothing wrong with the books and they belonged in young adult. And now that you have community members in these committees, they all say, no, they're not, they should be moved to adult, they're not good for young adults. And the reason why is you're talking to community members instead of one clique. The other thing, if there's no obscene books in a library, why did five members of this school district library citizens advisory committee, that were all school board, school district librarians and teachers, say that it was obscene? The book Verity was unanimously said that it was obscene and needed to come out, and a judge approved that decision two years ago. And last month, the one at the borough said the same thing unanimously, and there was one librarian on there, it said unanimously that this book was obscene. And as I told them, please, look, look at this, look at the data in front of you. If it wasn't obscene, why did they vote that way? If it's not obscene, how can you say there's no obscene books in the library? If it wasn't obscene, why did they just vote that it was? These are facts. Obscenity is not approved. It is not a First Amendment, it's not, it's not protected by the First Amendment. And the reason we're in this is because librarians have always taken the First Amendment to the extreme. They're not gonna touch it no matter what, everything that's out there is available, and in two thousand and three, the United States had to take them to the Supreme Court to make them, make sure that kids couldn't access porn on the computers, because they were saying that that was okay too. It's USA versus American Library Association, if you don't believe me, two thousand and three. And that's, and there was another one that just came out in June, Malmed versus Taylor, that says you can't do LGBTQ with children unless you give parents the right to opt out. So, there's another one that the ACLU was sponsoring, and it's Recox versus Little, I believe, and the ACLU just pulled that one. They don't even want it to go to the Supreme Court. Look it up, it's true, it's true. I only have facts, I suck in info, remember? Sorry, I blew it again.
Anyone else for audience participation?
Thank you, Mike. Wes Palmer Bar. Thank you, Mike, for talking about SOAP. That reminded me of so many medical classes I took. It's one of the first things they teach you. Everyone, all the public, everyone, go out and take the surveys. Thank you, guys, for pushing it off until the surveys are done. And it does kind of irk me that I did take the survey, that some people just kind of catching that, that that information that we're sharing on that survey is being shared with people up there, and if that's happening, that needs to be looked into up on the board. If the information that we're telling that survey is being shared, that wasn't disclosed to me when I took the survey, that my name was going to be put with my stuff, and that was gonna be public, that needs to be looked into, if that information, if someone's information was stuck out there. But, please, everyone, thank you for putting it there. I'm still curious why all of a sudden this...
I did want to say that the gentleman who spoke to the idea of honoring Officer Roland, I really think that is a very good idea and would be an awesome thing to, to respect him and his family and everything he did for Palmer. I also would ask that the City Council investigate Councilwoman Hudson because I'm very curious about how she had access to the Respect Parking Study phone calls. I did have a lengthy phone call with Kelsey with Respect, and I do encourage every business owner, current, future, past, to talk to Respect. Their office is located over, I think, in the old GCI building. I did have to cancel my appointment because of the ordinance that Hudson put in, but I do ask that she's investigated. I don't believe that she put in a FOIA request for that information, and I don't believe she should have had information on how long of a phone call I had with Kelsey. Colby, yes, you did a great job with extending the parking, but I want to explain to everybody what no code means. I have a large parking facility right here. So no code means I can build out 100% that lot with, with the building, and probably I'll do two or three stories to really benefit Palmer. Where are all those good people going to park? They're going to park right here at the depot on the street and take this up. If there's no code anywhere and we lose access to street parking, I'm going to be forced to ask my employees to park at the depot. I don't think that's a nice thing to do, but because of a no code for bars, restaurants, and all retail, I won't have a choice. I hire 50 employees, not all of them are there at the same time, and not everybody parks. But what, what else can a business owner do if, if somebody's allowed to take up all of the street parking because they don't provide any and there's no code required? And that's what a no code looks like. Also, I want to bring to everybody's attention that homeowners were trying to, on a small lot, add one extra parking space so they could save their home and rent out one room, rent out a mother-in-law bed for an Airbnb. That was denied because they had a small lot under 20,000 square feet, and everybody thought, oh, my goodness, no, not one extra parking lot in my neighborhood. But in the same neighborhood now with this code that ordinance that Victoria Hudson is proposing, now they can, they can, they can do a bar, restaurant, or a retail store and have 20, 30, 40, 50 cars in that same neighborhood that they weren't allowed to have one extra parking lot to save this couple's home. So I really think you need to look at what a no code really means and why for a select few. What about the dentist, the doctor, the hairdresser, schools, churches? Why are they not exempt? Why are you picking one select group and not anybody else? But thank you for your time and everything that you do, too. I know it's a tough position. Thank you.
Mayor and council members, Lori, Lori Copenberg. I just want to let you know that I did receive an email from Kelsey Anderson, who is the consultant for Respect on August 18th of 2025. Now, she's asked individuals to submit their information. I don't know how individuals or stakeholders have been selected. I don't believe everybody has been selected to participate. So I'm wondering, when are the public hearings? When will the community actually have an opportunity to put forth information? And knowing that public information and things like this take much longer than two months to provide, even the January, all that's going to do is continue to perpetuate the unknown, and it will come before you and come before you and come before you. Eliminating parking, even through the study when that happens, eliminating parking is not the right thing for our town. Now, businesses can come into Palmer anytime they want. They just have to find a property that works with the business model that they want to bring to our town, period. There are many options in this area or outside of Palmer, but if they have a business that has massive parking and they can't fit it in their property, then they need to be reviewed and they have the waiver process to pursue it. There's nothing that says they don't have the waiver. So the information provided earlier is false. There are not eight storefronts empty. These buildings are full. You might not like what's in the windows, but they're full. They're rented. You have the property next to Populane, that's empty by choice of the owners until somebody wants to come and pay for the tenant improvements, period. You have Just So, still waiting to figure out what they're doing, and you have one other building. I'm drawing a blank on that, but there's three. The laundromat also, but they're selling it. So it's false narrative. We do not have eight storefronts that are empty. It's just that they're doing a different type of business, and that's okay. Thank you.
Anyone else for audience participation?
Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff. My name's Herb Bischoff. I live here in Palmer, and I just wanted to have an opportunity to speak briefly on my way out of town for a while, and when I return, there'll be a new administration, and I'm looking forward to how the council responds to a new makeup. Along those lines, I appreciate Mike's comment. As a health provider, in the past, I also use what you are trying to use and appreciate, which is a matter of being open to subjective information, mostly from us here, from the audience. The objective information, that's the data that you get perhaps from the study that you're doing. And then your analysis or assessment of that information, what you plan to do with it. I think that's a good strategy, and I'm glad to hear that you're implementing that. Along those lines, I'd like to remind you of some of the testimony because I send a letter to each of you suggesting some items to look at over the, during the coming year. There's been several comments now about the senior center. I know that you've paid attention to that. You may have even gone to visit. I hope you continue to keep that in your sights and hope that it remains a viable community service here. Also, I'm glad to see the planning commission members are here, and that's important. And I think this is the first time I've seen anybody from the planning commission give you direct information at a public setting like this. I appreciate them doing that. Also, I wanted to thank you, Colby, for information you provided to help with a safety concern I had on the inner outer Springer Loop. That's moving forward, and I'm glad to see it's something that will be addressed for the betterment of the community despite the fact that it's outside the city limits, which I hope that'll change within the near future as you consider annexation. All of these things are on the docket, I know, if you're interested in, I hope, with the new administration. And I say that to you because many of you are running for mayor. One of you hopefully will win. And that you take time and prioritize so that with the full plate in front of you and all the many things that Palmer is asking you to do, that you set some priorities so that in fact you can get something done. I'm optimistic, I know you are, and I am appreciative of the hard work you put into doing this job, and thank you very much.
Anyone else for audience participation?
Sorry, guys, but I feel compelled as one of the old farts who's been here and done a lot of stuff. Let's have the record be clear that some of us thought we were doing the right thing. When we dedicated the memorial to Mr. Roland or Officer Roland, it is at our police station, and the public needs to know that if they've forgotten it. I have not forgotten the day that I was there, the day that it was dedicated. I'm glad that it gets brought to attention to people, but please don't feel like you have to do any further attention to that other than spread the word. Other than that, everybody else has said what needs to be said. Thank you for listening to all of us.
Anyone else for audience participation? Okay, we'll close audience participation. Next is council comments. Councilmember Erby, you still with us?
Yeah, I'm still here. Yeah, I apologize for making the meeting. I just didn't want to share this bug with everybody. I'm sorry I wasn't there. There was Janet Kincaid was there, Linda Combs, Gary Wolf. These people are pillars of our society, and I learned a long time ago when I was on the council, I listened to these people. But yeah, that's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Alkantra, council comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the Sermon delegation for being here and addressing us tonight. It's always cool to see my daughter get a little more time in public speaking, and it's also really cool to be a host parent for Yuma, who is here for a couple of weeks. And yes, I have fed her ice cream, and yes, she did get to see Moose. And I don't know, I haven't bought her any candy yet, but you know, she's, she's getting a full dose of time, mostly at Palmer High School. It's a unique situation because my daughter, after three kids graduating from Palmer High, my youngest, who's a senior this year, will actually graduate from Career Tech High School. So it didn't break my heart too much because she still spends a lot of time at Palmer High, but it's an interesting dynamic when she drops Yuma off for the day and goes to see her at lunch and picks her up at the end of the day and, and works it out. So, so it's all good. But I want to thank everybody who came out and testified tonight, no matter which side you're on, and you know, I'm glad that we're taking the time and to do this by the, by the process that exists and, and taking the time to wait for the study to get finished and see what it might say. I, I think, I think we can get to a, a good place with it, and, and we'll see, we'll see what the study has to say, and we'll see what, in January 27th, if it's ready for prime time by then, or if we have to push it off for a couple more months to get the right kind of information. But I definitely think there needs to be an open and transparent process with this issue, just like there needs to be with annexation and any other issues that come before the council. So thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I want to thank Councilmember Erby for not coming tonight and spreading any germs, but also too acknowledging the, the kind of the pillars of the community and the longtime efforts of Janet Kincaid, Linda Combs, Gary Wolf, Michelle Kincaid, the list goes on and on. You know, there's plenty of folks here that have contributed greatly to our, our fine city, so it's good that they're recognized. Lastly, I'll say the Palmer High School football Moose have won three games in a row, including a 33-32 thriller up in Fairbanks against West Valley over the weekend. And so after, after a rough go in Saldana to open the season, they're now three and one, and it's been a while. It's been since Coach Christensen coached the Moose that the Moose have had a winning season, and I think, I think this is their year. So if you get a chance, you know, the Potato Bowl is up in Wasilla this year. I hope to see everybody there for that. But if you get a chance to see some of the home games in Palmer, definitely come out and watch. They're, they're a solid stout team this year, and I look, I look forward to their continued success. So thank you, everybody. Have a great couple of weeks. See you back on the 23rd. Bye now.
Councilmember Hudson, council comments?
I'm always first or second on your list, so I should have had the mic ready. Thank you. Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that me and Councilwoman Graver, supporting it and bringing it forward, I'm not going to speak for her, but I'll speak for myself, that I've been told that, is this a political power move? No, this is not a political power move. It's not my responsibility as an elected official to sit and take in consideration consistently people who don't even reside within the city of Palmer, that aren't even people that vote to elect these people on this body to serve. It also is not my place as an elected official to only talk with certain business owners and discuss with just specific business owners what they want to have happen in the city. It's actually my purpose to serve and to discuss things with all the business owners. So there's nothing political in it. What I can see is, is that a conversation was trying to be brought forward to actually have the discussion because this is a concern with people who are currently trying to open businesses in Palmer, not just one business, but multiple empty businesses. And again, I've clarified and made sure that there is at least, at least seven in the central business district businesses that are empty, meaning they are not having any kind of trade with constituents, and there is no incoming business tax base, that they are empty. There's, there's no commerce going on. So that would be at least seven that I could go around and count within the business district. And that doesn't include separate stores inside of a store that can be rented out. So I also want to clarify that. So seven. What my political power move is in trying to bring forth an open and transparent conversation with the city council, there isn't one, just trying to have an open and transparent conversation. It seems that everybody wants open and transparent conversations until it brings competition for them, and then they're not interested. So guess, God forbid, it help other people that are coming here because I guess maybe the study should be, what empty property would you like them to purchase for parking? What, what, I guess, I don't know, I guess they can come to the city council and ask to buy city property at this point because I guess it's only for the people who have been here for decades. And also, if you want to know where the email came from, how I know that there was an hour and a half conversation, you want an investigation, Respect forwarded your email to the city, to people that were included in the email. I'm not conversating, I'm having my council comments. So that email was forwarded to the people that were included in the email. So again, there was no, I reached out to Respect and I need to be investigated because I was having communications with Respect. If we're going to have a parking study and you, and everybody wants it to be transparent and valid, then the parking study needs to be, that means that the meetings need to be consistent. These are the questions that are asked, these are the answers that are given. So thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. If we want Palmer to grow conservatively, there still has to be discussion about parking, and we can't just have the same three businesses dictate the parking for the entire community that can't even vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Graver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to say congratulations to Mr. Bell on his purchase of, or I guess the beginnings of Palmer Brewing Company. I wish you good luck, and I'm excited for you. That's awesome. I also wanted to say thank you to Ms. Burksall. I don't know if I got that correctly. Sorry?
Burksall?
Burksall, okay. I think, you know, it's really important to make sure that the other side is represented as well, so I appreciate that you came forward. Along those lines, it sounds like Respect, whether intentionally or not, may be giving certain businesses more of a voice than others, and I would just ask for council support to ask our manager to maybe investigate that and make sure that all businesses within, I guess, the, the scope of the contract that Respect was given, that they are given the same opportunities because as we heard, there are voices that are not here tonight. And I just want to make sure that this, the contract we have with Respect is respected and the full scope is, is equal.
I support that. I support that.
Thank you. I also just wanted to say, based on some conversations I had this week with constituents, that I, I have no problem listening to comments, thoughts, especially, you know, business owners, constituents on any agenda items that come forward. However, this week, well, the past couple of weeks, I've heard the words collusion. I've heard our new city manager is Jelly 2.0, and I don't appreciate words like that. I don't appreciate threatening sounding language. And unless, unless you have proof that those things are true and those things are actually happening and you're showing that proof to everyone that you are using those words with, then you're spreading rumors, and that's inappropriate, and that affects people's character. And, you know, whether or not you believe those things are true, if you do not have the proof, then you shouldn't be saying them. And also, our current I don't appreciate threatening sounding language, and unless, unless you have proof that those things are true and those things are actually happening, and you're showing that proof to everyone that you are using those words with, then you're spreading rumors, and that's inappropriate, and that affects people's character, and, you know, whether or not you believe those things are true, if you do not have the proof, then you shouldn't be saying them. And also, our current manager is nothing like our previous manager, and if you say that, then you didn't interact with him anyways. That is everything I had tonight, so have a good night.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to reiterate the Councilman Alcantra's comments about the Palmer Moose, it's a really exciting, I can't remember when we got the, when we got the Potato Bowl, I remember I got it from Sarah Palin way back when, which was really a good thing. I want to really, I do want to thank everybody who showed up tonight, you know, contentious issues, we're here to listen, and hopefully we can take the proper action as that, as that happens. And also, the Soroma delegation, it's always cool to see the young kids, you know, the excitement that they have, you know, and I'm glad they love ice cream, I do too, so that's a good thing. So I hope everybody has a good rest of the week, go Moose.
Deputy Mayor Tudor?
First of all, welcome to Palmer Soroma, welcome to Palmer Soroma delegation, we're all very happy that you're here with us, and, and I hope you enjoy your time in Palmer. It was an excellent event last night, and I just want to say a big thank you to the host families like Councilman John Alcantra, who helped make this all possible. Thank you for being a good host family to these students. And also, I went to ribbon cutting ceremony for, for our new business here in Palmer and Power Physical Therapy, I'm just glad that we have another small business here in our community. Thank you to the Palmer Chamber for setting up that ribbon cutting ceremony, and for Borough Mayor Edna De Vries for also being there and supporting our business community. And, you know, this parking thing, you know, I'm, although I will admit, I am wary about removing these parking apartments in general, my main issue was with the timing for this decision. It seemed rushed, I didn't understand why we're doing this now, when we just voted for to spend $50,000 on a parking study, then we're going to throw that out in order to meet an arbitrary deadline that I just didn't understand. You know, I remember when I was in planning and zoning, we discussed parking in depth, and we helped work on these parking codes, and, and it's an important process, especially this RFP that, that is clearly for a parking study first, and the pedestrian study is second. This is a parking study, make no bones about it. And, and I'm glad that we were able to wait on this, to see the results of parking study before we just go headlong and decide to become more like Anchorage or, or change our city before getting all the information. We, as a council, need to make informed decisions, and this parking study will give us crucial recommendations from professionals on how to best grow our city. And although, you know, early on Facebook, Councilman Hudson called me a liar who bends the truth and hides far decisions, I want to impart some wisdom, let us not trade reason for an artificial deadline. Let us be good stewards of taxpayer money and utilize the results of parking study that we spent so much money on in order to make an informed decision. The future of Palmer resides on our shoulders, and to put our own political goals aside for the future of our city is crucial. Thank you.
All right, and we're adjourned at 2028.